Good afternoon, everyone. We are here for a couple of public hearings and a meeting of the special meeting of the Department of Community and School Board, Board of Education, and we will start here with public hearing number one. And so we can determine we have a quorum, Catherine?
Yes.
And call the meeting to order. So we'll open it up first for the agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Jade and seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Greg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we have item C, presentation of the proposed property tax levy. And I wonder who will tell us about this? Interesting.
Go ahead, Jade.
Kid Brian would be a lot quicker.
Yeah. So just to explain.
Let's have you do it.
Just to explain, this is the first of two budget levies or budget hearings that were required. It's a new process. This one is basically, it's one just to make sure everybody knows what it's going to be, and then the second one is where we actually will approve it. That will be on our regular board meeting on the 15th of April. I'll get right into it. I've got two handouts. One of them is it's some general stuff from the budget, and the other one is actually the notice that was required to go in the paper. Just a recap of the proposed levies. The general fund rate is going to be 9.03, management 1.24. The PEPL is a dollar, the debt service is 233, and the total levy rate will be 1360. A comparison from last year to this year. The general fund increased 39 cents, the management fund 23 cents. The PEPL is a dollar, and that's remained unchanged for many years. And then the debt service, as we had presented back when we had run the bond issue, that will be $2.33, and that will remain unchanged. The levy rate increased 62 cents. The reasons? The general fund increased due to the district utilizing cash reserve levy to recruit part of the funds we use on our special ed deficit. We have not been able to cash reserve levy the last couple, I think, two or three years, and a lot of that is because of the SRR funds came in, our cash reserves were higher. But the one thing you have to understand on a sped deficit, you spend it, you can get the authority back, you can't get the cash back, and essentially, that's what we're doing here, is funding our special ed deficit from the past year. The management fund increased. Our reasoning there is it's used to fund the purchase of equipment, breakdown insurance. And essentially, what equipment breakdown insurance is, is it transfers some of the risk, transfers some of the risk from the general fund to the management fund, and it's a way we can actually save some funds in the general fund. And again, our reasoning is because of our sped deficit. So essentially, what we're trying to do is just fund what our sped deficit is creating. Even with these changes, we're still not covering the total cost of our sped deficit from the prior year. We're not able to do that. A notation on the valuations. The valuations did increase from 594 million to 651 million. It's an increase of 57 million. One thing to note, which is important here, is based upon when we first started doing the presentations on the bond issue, we had originally thought we would be up closer to 14, or excuse me, to $14, and we've been fortunate the valuations have actually kept it down some. And so I guess that's good. The valuations have increased enough that we're still not having to raise the rate as much. If you want to look at the other sheet, on this notice of public hearing, even John Parker from the Department of Management would tell you it's kind of confusing, but the left-hand column insignifies last year, the right-hand column insignifies the proposed 2025, and then the middle column essentially shows if the levy rates stayed the same, but the valuations increased, that's what would be the result of the totals there. And one other thing to note, I did get a call this morning from Mark Maxwell, and he did say the county did mail out those overall ones that have the county, the city, and the school. They were mailed on 3/19, and they weren't even actually required to be mailed until the 20th. So he just wanted to make sure. Stayed at that. That's all I have. Questions?
So the middle one's saying that if our budget would stay the same, then our levy rate would go down?
No. What it's saying is if we kept our levy rate the same, and the valuations increased, how organically it would have went down. Levy rate staying, valuations increase, that would be the result. Roger, the easiest thing to look at is actually the effective rate, which is the 1182, if I'm not mistaken, and that's the easiest way to understand.
Kind of shows the taxpayer what, if we didn't spend any more money, all things being equal, that number would be that, as opposed to... You said in that last column, if property values increase, I assume that's what's happened.
The middle one.
So what's the one in the right based on?
The right one is what we're posting.
Yes, and that's based on the increase in property tax values. And in next month or so, do we have to approve, vote on the approval of the budget for next year? So this is a step in that process to be able to approve the budget? And you said this is a new thing. Is this something the state of Iowa is requiring us to have a hearing?
It's requiring any public entity, the cities, the counties, the schools, actually requires community colleges also, that they have to have this extra step in the process.
And this is to show the public what you tend to do next month, improving the budget?
Yep.
So we're clear. The other thing is, you mentioned a number of times the sped. I don't know if everybody gets the acronyms all the time, but that's the special education, correct?
I apologize, special education. Yeah, thank you.
And so I'm always thinking about the funding of the new additions and school and everything that. How does that come into play in the budget for next month?
That is actually the $2.33, which is the debt levy. And that will remain the same through the whole life of the debt. That's the way it's scheduled. That's the way we have the financing program written on that.
So that's pretty set.
And actually, we had that already last year.
Yeah, okay. And so what's really precipitating the change mostly is the sped deficit for previous years?
Absolutely.
What are we doing? What are we doing, I guess, from an administrative standpoint to be looking at this for future years? Because obviously, we're seeing an increase in the needs for special education, for kids being transported out of Harlan because we don't have what they need here.
I will actually, you know, genuine act both. I mean, one of the things is, we actually understand it's high, and a lot of it is out of our control.
Right.
If you can understand that. We are trying to do things such as anybody that we can file for Medicaid, we do that. But that takes some cooperation between the parents, the school, and the medical profession.
So in our partnerships, like with the therapeutic classroom, that's Green Hills AEA, I mean, we're hoping that that will be able to stay, and we can continue to use that. That at least saves one student plus transportation costs back and forth. We're looking into other options, too, that might not be as expensive, but I will tell you, all districts are feeling the same thing. We have looked into some additional, I mean, it all costs, it's just very expensive, especially, like Brian said, we don't have it under our control. If a child gets placed by someone else, even by the court, by their parents, by someone else, we're still responsible for their academic part of it, so not everything. But we do have a few students that will not, will likely graduate next year, so this, we're anticipating that it goes down. Mind you, that someone doesn't move into our district, like we had a couple move into the district that were already attending some of those places. So we, again, have been working with them, and we're doing our best to try to get them back, because that's the goal. You want them back. But if we can't help them be successful, then we have to do what's best for them.
I really feel like we're very proactive. It's just sometimes, transportation was huge last year. We, that was a large portion, but it was a big part of it, is we had enough students that we weren't able to serve that we were providing transportation for, and that adds up quick.
Is there any news on the fate of the AEA? Does that affect this next year's budget?
So there's nothing official just yet, but now the new law, or the new proposal is from the House. So then the House will send it to the Senate, and the Senate has to approve it to go to the governor. So what I did hear was that there were behind-the-scenes talks between the House and the Senate in order to make this House bill and to compromise a little bit more. So honestly, though, that still has special ed services for the most part at the AEA, so we would still continue to work with them, and then it shifts a little bit of the media and the ed services.
It still reads for a cut, though.
Yes, it still reads for a cut. We will have to absorb some of that, I think. Yeah, well, right now, I think the very first year, 100% would still go back to the AEAs, and then the next year, 90% would go to the AEAs, 10% would go to us. So that depends on if we want to give that back to the AEAs or keep that.
Sure.
But yeah, the cut would be on the other side of things with instructional services and media. So that would, that...
Which I mean, schools will be affected by that personally.
Yes.
So I personally, if you read it even now, think that we'll still see some places that we will have to compromise in or take the hit, I guess.
Yeah, the AEAs are going to have to slim down. So, and that'll be in many different areas. So that, I don't know, I mean, you can tie mental health to special ed, you can untie mental health to special ed, but that will take a hit, so that will affect us one way or the other. Or they also are talking about fee for services. So if they're fee for services, then we would have to pay for that, which, again, right now, we get technically for free, but we would get that money to pay for that fee for service.
And that's Area Education Association.
Yes, Area Education Association. Yes, and ours is Green Hills, Green Hills AEA, yeah.
Green Hills. Brian, I know that you've said it before, but I need to answer it again. The save penny shows up here in that 233 piece, or?
The save, what, essentially, the save, what we, I'm going to say past and now and future, if that's okay. What we've used the save for in the past, Al, is to fund, up until this last year, we had paid all our revenue bonds, our general obligation bonds, we had paid for all of those on the middle school with the save. Now, with the building project and actually the borrowing that we've done to enable that, going forward, our general obligation bonds will be financed by the GO levy, okay? Are you with me there? The revenue bonds will be financed with the save. In addition to that, we also, in the past, have used the save to fund part of our technology budget. That will continue. It's also, any unforeseen things that come up, we usually have enough there that where we can cover that, where we don't have to require additional borrowing or something. So that's what will be going forward.
So is it correct for us to say that, were it not for the save penny, we would have had to be higher than the 233?
Oh, without any question.
Yeah.
With...
So we were able to get it down to here with the help?
You'd be another third as high, at least.
Well, that's a good...
I mean, if I, you know, if I just took a guess, you'd go from 233 to probably three and a half.
So the question, a couple of questions that I have is, as far as the general fund levy increasing roughly $762,000, is that just normal, besides the sped? Is there, I mean, that's obviously not all sped.
Are you talking the dollars?
Yes.
Some of that's coming from increases in valuation, essentially. It's formula-driven. What you're going to see is, if you look at the dollars, Roger, I'll actually oversimplify.
No, I understand that it's because of that increase, but then I'm assuming that that's what we're going to use for our budget?
That's what we're going to use for increasing salaries and increasing in other things.
Okay, yes, okay. So that's what I'm getting at. As far as the dollars go, it's not just for the sped, it's for other things.
Absolutely.
And same way with the management part.
Yep.
So if our, it'd been nice if our levy did go up, how much would our, how much funds would we have available? Because see, we're showing, well, this at 13.6, but if our levy were to stay at 12.97, I'm just, just because I like to do that.
I could actually maybe oversimplify it. The amount that will be cash reserve levying is approximately around $440,000 on the general fund. The management fund is pretty easy, because you can actually see the dollars there. I think it's, it's probably about 200. So you're going to be about 640. So you have a total increase there of about 1.2, so the other 8,000 is to count for, just basically increases in the cost of operating.
Okay.
And that honestly is...
Eight lightbulb power link.
It's probably about 3%, which is...
Can I ask you a what-if question? If there was a downturn, and you had it here, and the valuations do go down, is there very much room in that 40 cents from 360 to 14 to accommodate something like that?
360 to 14.
Yeah, in other words, we have the $13.60.
Is there enough room there?
Yeah.
You'd have some there. The other thing you have to remember is, that's part of the reason we don't, what I'm going to use thinly, cap thinly borrow against our save. That's the reason we don't commit all of our save, because if we had to go back and use some of that to help subsidize that, we'd have that there. So you built some things in. One of them is, you don't use up all your save right up to the dollar, so you actually have some ability to go back against that if you had to. But yeah, the 40 cents should be more than enough there.
So in other words, if there was no increase in valuation, what would that $13.60 rate level look like?
I honestly, I would not, without putting that in...
It is more complicated.
Yeah, it's much more complicated.
Is this year-to-year, Brian? So historically, have we ever decreased our levy?
Yes. When we didn't have a debt levy, now you're going to really call on my memory, but when we didn't, when I first started in 2010, there were a lot of cash reserves because of ARA, which was another, before SRR. There was a lot of cash reserves, cash reserves on hand at that time, and because of it, we weren't able to cash reserve levy for two to three years. Ours went down because we didn't have a debt levy. Our PEPL has always been a dollar, and management at that time was pretty easy to control because we really, that was before the property insurance rates really started taking a raise. So those three things are pretty easy to control. Well, you didn't get a cash reserve levy, one. You aren't changing your PEPL, too, and your management stays close to the same, three. Okay, well, the only other thing that can affect that is your regular, your regular general fund levy, which, again, is formula-driven. Well, if your rates go up and you aren't cash reserve levying, you know what's going to happen to your general fund rate? It's going to go down.
But Roger, do you see valuation prices coming? They can't stay where they are forever.
I don't know. I wish I had a crystal ball.
It makes your job a lot easier, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but historically, I mean, valuations don't go down a lot.
Really?
They really don't. Especially in this area. If you're looking in, I feel like more of the metropolitan area, commercial properties can fluctuate quite a bit. It's even residential, you know, even back in 2008, when there was a housing market bubble, you know, you see throughout the country, housing values going down 50%, but you didn't see that for a while. So you could see, you could see a decrease, but I wouldn't think it'd be a lot, maybe 10% on that.
Yeah, historically, if you look, I think in Shelby County alone, I think it's been between 3% and 4% since I've worked for the district.
But I mean, we're looking at our, I mean, the total dollars of levy is increasing about 15%, roughly.
Yep, it's, again, two of those are coming from $600,000.
Yeah.
Very good. Any additional questions for Brian or anyone else? Someone like to make a motion to approve the presentation of?
We don't have to approve anything.
Okay.
You just have to go to D.
Good. We'll just move on to item D then, and for some comments from the public. Okay, that's fine. Okay. If there's no comments from the public, should we go to item E, which is the adjournment? We'd like to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Tell them.
Seconded by Jade. Seconded by Al. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Next, we have our second public hearing, and we'll call the meeting to order, determine that we have a quorum, and we'll move on to item B, which is to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda for this public hearing? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve.
Moved.
Moved by Roger?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Jade. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. So next, we have item C, issuance number four, the middle school front entry. Good.
Are we on the public hearing portion of this?
I'm on the wrong here. Hold on. Sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I've got to get to the right one here, sorry.
It's the middle one, or?
It's the top one?
Yep.
Middle one.
Everybody thought you learned how to use them.
I know how to use it.
I'm out.
Fine.
Promise I don't.
I'm on the wrong one all the time.
Okay.
So for the public hearing portion of this, there's no news. I can just describe the project we had designed. For the plans and specifications, this would be, I don't know if people want to pull it up if they haven't seen it.
Okay.
Our goal here was, one, the availability of federal funding for security-related projects was available. I believe Harlan obtained the authority to use a portion of those, the federal grant. So we worked with CNBA to design a front entry addition to the middle school. So this would be adding about 600 square feet of building addition. That would more or less be a secure vestibule, along with a reception area and a office for the principal. This also included about 400 square feet of renovation to construct the area. Keep going, maybe down a couple of sheets. Keep going, keep going. Maybe two more sheets, one more sheet. Yes, that area right there. So where you see the bold lines would be new building. Generally speaking, they're in a little bit different position now, but you do have a vestibule over there currently, where you see the sets of double doors that go into the building. But this structure would be created on the front of the middle school. You know, new foundation, new structure, new roof, and then new interior build-out. Yeah, this would be a little bit of storage and the middle school principal office in this area. This is what Harlan, or CNBA came up with.
North is what direction?
Yeah, up.
Up. Okay.
So that's like going in the front corner of the ward?
So the doors you walked in here, the doors you walked in to get to the district office?
Okay.
Yeah, so on the same face of the building, just all the way down to the other end from the entrance, we walked in to get to this meeting. So the HVAC work included pulling ductwork back from that corridor area. We have to upsize the ductwork to make it work within this space. Electrically, nothing crazy, just pulling in new power, new lighting, new fire alarm, fire sprinkler would all be involved with this building in addition.
Done?
Mm-hmm. That's the action items that will happen next, once the public hearing is closed. Any questions on the plans or specifications related to the design project?
Hard to visualize.
There are, there were renderings there. We could show those, they're further down in the sheets. So if we keep going down a little bit...
Who would want to be an architect?
How do you zoom out? How do you zoom, how do you zoom back? Oh, I see.
Aren't they up top?
Yeah, there was one up top. But I want to get, is this zoom? Yeah, okay. So, well, I mean, we can just go to the cover, I guess. And I can zoom in on this piece.
Need a laser pointer?
Generally speaking, this is what it was going to look like. So the goal here was to integrate this to be similar with what we're doing at the high school entrance. So we are constructing a new entrance on the high school as part of the current issuance two project. Sorry for jumping around here. That includes some of this metal panel, this red metal panel, along with very similar signage, storefront at the high school. So this is quite similar to what we're doing out front, right over here. So to keep that theme going, the existing awning you see there, so the big white structure that has almost the Y columns on it, that would be demoed. That is not integral to the building, it's freestanding. That'd be demoed, and this would be built in its place.
Those doors now are outside kind of the facility.
They are.
So you'll, to the right of that is open, and you're basically outside.
Correct, correct. So if we, so you do currently have a vestibule. It just would move forward a bit from where it is today. So if I jump down to the demo sheets, I can show you what we're talking about here. So on that same sheet, this is your current setup. These are the awning structures that are out front. So this door line is right here currently. So that goes in and up here. We would basically move your vestibule forward to then accommodate this new, this new area down here. So that was the proposed project.
I'm going to assume all functional and good for all your needs?
Excuse me?
Functional and good for needs?
Yeah.
Any other more discussion or questions? Otherwise, could we have a, we don't need any. Okay, so we will open it up for the public comments. Comments from the public. Comments from the public? Okay. We got another Steve here. Okay, enough. Could we, we'll go move on to the adjournment, and we'll look for a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved.
So moved by Jade.
I'll second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. And we'll move on to the special board meeting of the Harlan Community School District, and we'll call the meeting to order, and we have a forum once again. And so we'll mention that this is a public forum, and so we'll ask Catherine if anyone had requested to speak at the public forum, and the answer is no. And so we'll move on to item C, approve the agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda for this special meeting? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. And so we'll move on to item D, the action items. And we'll, first one is the approval of the proposed property tax levy.
I move the approval of the property tax levy as presented.
So moved by Al, second.
Second.
We got a second from Greg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. So we'll move on to action item D two, approval of the plans and specifications for the addition, the entry addition. Any questions or comments about that, or do we talk about that a little bit first?
For the approval of plans and specs, it's, it's basically what we just showed you. Unless there's any, our recommendation would be to approve the plans and specifications as you just saw, and then we'll talk about where the bids came in in a second.
So question, if we discuss this, and if it does happen that the bids were too high, is it going to have to be some, some?
There will absolutely be redesign.
Yeah, so do we want to approve these, if redesign is in the mix?
It won't. I'm not sure it will make a difference.
That's okay.
And, and we did, it will not make a difference on our end for a potential plan B if the bids were too high on this project.
So we're just approving the design?
You're approving the design that fit your programming, and it was, it was, it's, as it's proposed, it would work for your function and within what Harlan needs.
I'm under the assumption that the facilities committee has approved the design and is, is recommending us to, that this is a good design? Is that correct?
The facility committee has not met on this particular plan.
I was going to say, that would not be a good assumption, because we did not see the design until just this.
Well, we worked closely, we were closely, you know, with, with all staff and administrative components that were tied to this for the programming piece. The goal was to push this through relatively quickly through design versus the design process this group was used to as part of issuance one, two, and three. And the goal there was to get started as quickly as possible this spring to try to accommodate as quickly as we could the new school year. Now, the schedule proposed didn't have us wrapping up by mid-August, but relatively close thereafter. And that's, that's kind of how this one issuance went, driven by the fact that federal funding is available to supplement some of the project cost here.
The main concern is to make sure that whatever we're doing is, you know, really helping with the safety of entrance into the building and then what we need to do.
The overarching, yes, and the overarching goal being that instead of where you currently, you know, you could get buzzed in through the vestibule, then you're in the school.
You're in the school.
Until you get, and then you have to go to the office to then, to reception. This, this, along with every other new entry in the state of Iowa, is you walk into an area and the function you need to then access to, you know, talk to anybody is right there. You're not entering the school until you've been fully approved as a visitor to get in.
And if I remember right, the board did approve the design.
Yes. We approved Bill, working with Stephen, to design. So we didn't see it, but we said, Bill, we trust you.
Start the design.
Yes. And it's tied to the safety grant, again, that does, which is tied to federal dollars, which we're trying to keep them separate from.
We had to due to the cost threshold with this one, but also, little tricky here, your, your bond referendum language specified middle and high school facility improvements. It's broad. This federal grant, though, to use that, it needs to be its own project. So it could not be a change on our current project. Along with the federal funding comes the Davis Bacon wages. So prevailing wage is tied to this project as well.
So you need a motion to approve the design?
Yep.
If I make that.
So great. Look at this.
I'll second.
Multiple people.
Roger.
Multiple people.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Did I decide it was Al and who?
Al and Jane.
Jane.
Jane's second.
Yeah.
No, fine. No, fine. I wrote it down too.
You better. You gotta be fast, Catherine.
Yeah. I'm trying.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, now we're moving on to item D three, the approval of the low bids order.
We can either pass these around or just pull it up, either way. We had our bid letting.
Oh, yeah, I'm not going to see that.
We had our bid letting on Thursday, last Thursday. And we'll talk about our strategy with this project bid first. The, the goal here, the thought was that we have work going on on campus. It costs contractors money to mobilize, costs contractors to secure resources for certain projects, especially small projects. Our thought here was, we've got contractors onsite already, let's try to leverage them. Although it's a public bid, anybody could bid. But hey, guys, this is out, you know, please take a look at this, you're here already. Thought was there might be some economies of scale, there are some efficiencies. As you'll see, we did not get any bidders outside of who's already onsite here. And as you also note, we did not achieve cost efficiency with this project.
But we did get a bidder per.
We had no gaps on bids, so we got a bidder for everything. Couple things driving this. So one thing we've realized is that from the competition and the groups we have onsite have a lot of work to do this on. Basically, what this reads as is we have so much work that if you want us to add this to our plate, you are going to have to pay a premium to do it.
Yeah.
That was unanticipated based on the scope of work involved. This isn't a large project, but it does put them on a completely separate area of the campus that they're not on. And obviously, the, the driving factor here would, would be our general construction package, the bid package A. The low bidder for that was baiting construction. That would be the overall cost driver compared to where our estimate was. So just, just to put things in perspective, the new construction across the street came in at about a little over 300 bucks a square foot. That project came in under slightly, slightly over budget. It made the overall program slightly over budget, but came in slightly under our engineer's estimate. That was 300 bucks a foot. For a new entry that was bid out in a rural Iowa town about a month ago, it came in at about 1,000 bucks a square foot. Now, 43,000 square feet versus 500 square feet, that's where you get your separation of cost per square foot. This came in at over 2,000 bucks a square foot. So this is not a, this is how much the, this is not how much the construction is worth taking outside factors into account. This is what that project is worth to these contractors. So that is a, that, this is not, De novo's recommendation is to reject all of these bids. Now, immediately following this bid letting, and the obvious, the obvious conclusion that the budget could not afford this no matter what. So this wasn't a conversation of, okay, well, how do, can, can we move some funding here or there to make this work? The answer is no. This is a solid 50% over, overall budget for this project, and a budget we felt was conservative. Immediately following the bid letting, we all met and decided, let's look at a plan B. We found one that day. It involves utilizing existing space within the middle school. It does not involve adding in addition and just moving a couple of things around that we have yet to fully finalize, but it is a very, very, very possible plan based on administrative staff input and leadership feedback. So we have a good plan. We're not able to present that quite yet because we don't have all the details worked out, but we will very quickly. And the plan would be to still utilize the federal funding and take advantage of that without it, without the prevailing wage piece of that, which adds around 25 to 30% to construction if it's a, if it's a Davis Bacon project. We would work to minimize the impact it would have on the overall cost of the project.
Timing would remain?
Timing would change fairly significantly. We would work over the next two to three months on a redesign. We would bid this out in the fall intentionally. If you remember correctly with the high school, we had extremely high bids up front. That was to basically bid it out about now to start in May or June. We, we received bids that we felt were way too high, so we changed a couple of things with the design. We bid it out last fall to start this May, and this came in within budget. We would propose the same for this. We would get through design. We'd actually go through a full cost estimating cycle, which we did not, we did not perform in this, this project due to the amount of design time we had to get this out the door. We would do that with this next one to make sure that before bidding, we've got a good handle on any surprises we might see like we saw last Thursday, and then react to those surprises and change things that was necessary.
You indicated that a big piece of the surprise or the reasoning was that it was a rush thing in their mind, so if, if we move this, I'm not proposing this, but if we move this a year down the road, or, I mean, even if you bid it this fall, it's going to be lower than this, right?
If, if we could bid this one this fall, the premium, the amount of overage compared to budget on this particular project, there's no way the decrease will have from, from old bit backlog with contractors.
Answer my question.
Yep.
By doing it this fall, too, we're bidding, I think the way I would put it is, is they were going to fit this in. There's always going to be more cost of fitting in than to bidding into their, their, their filling their docket for next year.
Correct.
Was there a reason there was only one bidder on each part of it? Usually you'd have maybe a couple, two, three bidders on each part of it, did?
Um, yeah, depend, a lot of, so especially the projects here in Harlan, even with massive bidder solicitation on our end, the most we've gotten on a bid, I think, is three, and it was on a roofing bid for issuance three. Most of our, most of our work packages are coming in with one bid, and that was on issuance one, two, and three so far.
And there's no, there's no general contractor or contractor capable that, in the Harlan area, Shelby County area, or Crawford, or, you know, surrounding counties that would be willing to take? I mean, this is not a big project.
It's not a big project. Not a big project.
The feedback I hear is the bonding. It's a lot to bond for as much as you would have to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is a little bit. So the way bonding works is, is if you're a contractor with a clean record, you're probably looking at three quarters of a percent of the total contract value for your cost for your bond. On this particular project, bonding probably didn't play a huge role just because the amount it would cost them to get the bond would be low, just due to construction value. Now, on the larger projects, that, that was definitely a factor for a lot of the local contractors would be bonding, one, bonding capability. You have to be approved to bond to a certain amount. So there might be, there might be three electrical contractors that are fully capable of renovating this high school. The problem is, they don't have any bonding capacity for that high of contract total. Now, on this particular project, we did solicit. Everything goes to our online plan room, which if you are a subscriber of the online plan rooms, every commercial contractor basically is. You saw this project. One of the main factors as to why somebody wouldn't look like, wouldn't look at this is, one, they know all the work that's going on in Harlan, they know contractors already contracted for it that might have a leg up, and then, two, the, the value. It was, it's very unlikely that a fire sprinkler company is going to look at this project and say, I want to go bond for that, I want to chase that, just because of the value. Now Midwest did, because they're here already, and they could just ship the guy over. There's probably an extreme example, but like the mechanical and electrical, those still came in higher than we budgeted, granted, not, not to the dollar amount that the general construction package came in at. But even those, you know, talking to trees, well, no, you got us on this project, we can't look at that one. I mean, they're right across the street, they still could make sense over here, but they couldn't do it. Or didn't, or didn't find this project valuable enough to their team to make it work.
Well, at least we have bids, and that's what, I mean, if there are schools that get zero bids, and they have something to reject as opposed to nothing to, you know, look.
I have a hard time stomaching projects that have any bid gaps. There are a lot of, that, that all comes down to bidder solicitation, and that, that's, that's particular to a CM team from one to the other. But with this one, you know, this, this just came in far higher than estimated, but it is our extreme opinion that this does not equal the value of this prod, this particular project. But we also believe that we were far enough off with our estimate that there is no rebidding this or changing up. There's also really nothing to change with the plan to make this work. It's not like we can cut 500 square feet out of it to make this work, because it's 500 square feet. Looking at it, if you had a 44,000 square foot building across the street, and you had to cut a million bucks out of it, say, you multiply your, your anticipated cost per square foot against the square foot you need to cut, and you try to make it work with classrooms. You can't do that on a small project like this.
On the state funding that's coming with this, is that based off the size of the project, dollar amount of the project, or just a splat?
So the, it's a federal, it's actually federal money going through the state, so then you have both. You get $50,000 per building, so we applied for $50,000. So we have $200,000 total coming. You have to use some of that on each building and then can apply to use the extra for one bigger project. So most of the rest of it is going for safety cameras. And then we just focused on two things, cameras and the vestibule.
And how much did it look like the people that come toward this part of it, that you have a new deal?
150,000. But you do understand because, I think Stephen and I have talked about this ad nauseam, but you know, it's 150,000, you do have to understand when you put Davis Bacon, you tie that to it, you can really shrink it by a quarter.
It's about 115,000 you probably had in construction value.
And you know, we've spent, was it 150,000 just for the plans and specs that we're ditching right now?
60,000.
I thought it was a little bit more than that. But this should have been, you know, even at the $300 square foot, that'd be 180,000. So that's just mind-boggling.
Which I would never propose, that was an example of a large project comes in at 300. We, this, this should have come in at, at 1,000 bucks a square foot.
But you can build a brand-new house for $200, $300 a square foot with, with all kinds of plumbing and all kinds of amenities and marble and everything like that.
That's not a government project.
Just, just without the government, just without the government stipulations, codes, and regulations that are applied.
But this is just concrete and a roof. It's not, there's nothing here that's, that's extravagant.
I think come out of this, I think we, I think we do have a plan B there for it.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, I, I.
So the goal will be, we'll hear more by Wednesday for Plan B, Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, we'll have an updated schematic plan from CNBA and an updated cost estimate for our team that's tied to no new construction but renovation work associated within the middle school to make a new secure reception area off of the front of the building work. So all the functions shown in the current plan would still be, would, would still be included in the new project option. There'd be nothing left out, just 540 square feet of new construction.
So do we just need a bid?
Our recommendation is to reject the low bids.
So we need to reject the bids.
So moved by Roger to reject the, the bids for the entry vestibule area.
I'll second.
Second by Jade. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next, we move to item E, adjournment, and who is going to make the motion to adjourn?
You bet.
So moved by Jade. And second by Al. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.